Amber, you ready?
Ready.
Steve, you ready? All right. Betsy and John and, okay, and Erin. See, now, ready? All right. We will call the Center County Board of Commissioners June 27th meeting order at 10:00 a.m. All those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So, at this point, we would be taking public comment for items that do not appear on today's agenda. The two items on today's agenda are the Responsible Contractor Ordinance and the Community Development Block Grant Project Review. All right. I'm not seeing any public comment for anything that are not those two items. Do we have any additions to the agenda?
No.
No? All right. We have our meeting minutes. Any changes or alterations to the meeting minutes from June 20th? All right. We'll take a motion, then.
I move to approve the minutes from the meetings held June 20th, 2023.
I have a second to approve the minutes from the meetings held on June 20th. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. All right. Now, we will move on to item number seven, which is the hearing on the Responsible Contractor Ordinance. Sorry, it's number six. I already skipped to the ordinance itself. Item number six, the Responsible Contractor Ordinance Hearing. We will open the hearing at 10:01, and our administrator, John, will have an opening PowerPoint to explain the background because some of the details can get a little bit technical.
Before we begin, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer a comment on the Contractor/Subcontractor Responsibility Certification. Under item number six, the firm needs the boding requirements, and there should be an N, should be bonding, so it...
Oh, bonding, missing an N. Okay. All right. So, duly noted that the item number six on the Contractor/Subcontractor Responsibility Certification, we need an N to make it bonding requirement. All right. Very good. Thank you. So, moving it over. Okay. Oh, all right. All right. So, I'll turn it over now to John Fronic to give us a PowerPoint to give some background details on the Responsible Contractor Ordinance. Take it away, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Center County held two public work sessions and received feedback on the proposed ordinance. All public notice requirements were performed, including the legal, required legal ad posting in the local paper of general circulation. We are here today, Tuesday, June 27th, to hold the public hearing for ordinance one of 2023, Responsible Contractor Ordinance, commonly referred to as the RCO. If the RCO is enacted today, the ordinance would go into effect in 30 days on July 27th of 2023. Generally speaking, the objectives of the RCO are to ensure safe, timely projects per spec and codes while at the same time providing the lowest overall cost and best value to the county and the county taxpayers. Another objective is to limit project risks and protect the proprietary interests of the county. There is also a desire to ensure adequate development of trained, skilled workers and to provide a safe work environment to those workers. Couple of clarifying points about what will be required under the RCO if enacted. The ordinance does not apply, again, does not apply to county-endorsed or sponsored projects. It applies only to projects undertaken directly by Center County. Similarly, it does not apply to buildings, structures, or facilities owned by others, public or private. The ordinance only applies to projects undertaken directly by Center County on county-owned buildings, structures, and facilities costing $250,000 or more that are subject to competitive The proposed ordinance requires a self-certification process for bidders, which includes integrity provisions as well as proof that bidders have sufficient numbers of craft, labor, personnel. Examples of integrity provision requirements would be that a contractor has not defaulted on any projects within the last three years, has not had any type of business contracting or trade license or certification revoked or suspended in the last three years, and has not been debarred or suspended by any federal, state, or local government agency or authority in the last three years. Again, these are only a few examples and not the entire list of the integrity provisions that you will find in the proposed ordinance. Proof of sufficient craft labor personnel would include assurances that at least 70% of the craft workforce is comprised of either journey persons who have completed or are currently enrolled in an apprenticeship training program or other program that is registered and approved by the U.S. Department of Labor or other state program. There are two provisions that enable the county to waive the RCO requirements. The RCO can be waived by the county if no bids are received or if a single bid is received and it exceeds the project budget. The ordinance contains requirements that would disqualify a bidder from competing for county-owned projects. Past performance issues, failure to meet bonding requirements, lack of proper licenses, registrations, and/or certificates are a few examples. With that said, though, this, just because a potential bidder may not qualify today to participate in a county-owned project, it does not mean that they are banned in perpetuity from bidding on county-owned projects. A bidder who has been disqualified from bidding can once again bid on a county-owned project once they can meet all self-certification requirements. Custom fabrication and prefabrication is another area of the ordinance that has garnered some discussion. Prevailing wage in the RCO would apply to any custom fabrication work on a county project over $250,000. This means that non-standard goods or materials produced off-site specifically for a project... Sorry, I lost my place here. This means that non-standard goods or materials produced off-site specifically for a project covered by this ordinance must also comply, and this is spoken to on page four of 10 of the ordinance, lines 140 through 149. With that, there are some guidelines relative to public speaking under the, under the hearing. Staff were stationed in the lobby this morning to assist with signing in all members of the public who are here to attend the hearing. Attendees who stated their desire to speak were given a sequential number on a first-come, first-served basis. Again, speakers are allotted five minutes each, and our count as of this hearing this morning, I believe, was 29.
I go as high as 28 on my sheet.
Okay.
Maybe we have somebody, a couple of double tens or something.
Okay. So, with that many speakers, and if we're allotting them five minutes, that's 145 minutes of testimony. So, just to give you an idea of the time that's going to be committed to this. So, attendees who stated their desire to speak were given a number. So, to ensure a timely and equitable hearing, we ask that speakers refrain from repetitive comments. If your comments echo a previous speaker, simply state your agreeance with the previous speaker and provide any additional context that has not already been stated. Anyone who has not signed up to speak and wishes to do so, please return to the reception counter in the lobby to be added to the speaker list, and we'll, we'll add you to the end of, of the speaker list. Again, the opportunity for the public to speak will be during the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, the Board of Commissioners will then entertain a motion on the RCO, then hold discussion amongst themselves prior to voting on the ordinance. So, that is the timeline and how we propose to go through this. So, once the hearing is closed, the Commissioners will then consider a motion under the agenda, and then the, there will be a discussion solely amongst themselves. So, at that point, the public comment is, is pretty much, is complete. So, the hearing is your opportunity to provide testimony to the county and the Commissioners.
I'm sorry, where is the sign-up sheet?
At the, at the desk, yes. So, if you make your way there, we can, we can add you to the list. So, with that, I will turn it back over to the Chair.
Okay. All right. So, we will now open the floor to receive public comments at 10:09. I believe our first speaker is Jessica O'Hara. If you could approach the podium and mention which municipality you live in, and then, obviously, Speaker number two should kind of try to be at least in the area, yeah.
Hello there. I'm Jessica O'Hara. I live in College Township. I come here in support of passing the Center County Responsible Contractor Ordinance. I will let others make the arguments for how this ordinance, as a policy, will protect taxpayers, save money, and develop our local workforce. But today, I will start with a history argument and a moral requirement. I've lived in Center County for nearly two decades now, but I didn't grow up here. I grew up in Mount Pleasant, an old mining town in western Pennsylvania, known by people in my grandparents' generation by a different name, Helltown. And yes, that's where the brewery got its name. All throughout that region, in the late 19th and early 20th centuries, industrialist Henry Frick was buying up mining and coke operations. Growing up, I played in this industry's remnants. I would climb giant piles of slag and would hide in abandoned coke ovens with kids in a nearby neighborhood called Standard Shaft. In January 1891, the heyday of Frick's operation in the area, there was a mine explosion in the township surrounding. The explosion in the Mammoth Number One Mine killed 109 men and boys, immigrants mostly. The carnage prompted the workers at the Moorewood Shaft in town to strike, demanding safer conditions, higher wages, and shorter hours. Then there was a lockout. People were evicted from their company-owned homes and couldn't shop at the company's store. After several weeks of unrest and increasingly dire conditions, about 1,000 folks marched down Moorewood Street in protest toward the company store and the mine superintendent's home, apparently accompanied by a brass band. A deputized regiment of the Pennsylvania National Guard fired into the crowd and killed nine people, immigrants mostly. The strike was broken. It was not until the year 2000, more than 100 years later, that any of these horrific events were officially commemorated, but they did prompt changes in their own time. In response to the Mammoth Mine Disaster, the Pennsylvania Legislature passed a raft of mine safety regulations and strengthened mines inspections. Frick Company President, Thomas Lynch, introduced the phrase, "Safety is the first consideration", and "Safety First" signs appeared throughout the sites. The company published a set of safety guidelines and were frequently amended and adopted by other mine companies. Why did I tell you this story? It's because this story isn't in the past. It's ongoing, and it's what brings us here today. And it's not like the workplace deaths have ended. Five people have lost their lives at work sites in Center County since 2018, and the investigation into those deaths usually revealed an OSHA violation. Though we would like to think that companies self-regulate, applying the highest standards and incentive pride to their work product, providing ongoing training and fair compensation to their workers, and assuring their safety, history unfortunately tells us that this is not always, or even often, the case, and it's the workers and the people on whose behest the government acts who must insist and continue to insist upon standards that companies should meet. Here in Center County, we can do better. We can insist on safety standards and worker training with this simple ordinance that contractors doing large projects within the county, which means working for the people of this county, the taxpayers, must meet. I know, as a taxpayer, I insist upon it in remembrance of the long-dead workers from my hometown resting together in a mass grave, and those who recently lost their lives at sites many of us pass or even enter in Center County each day, and for the living who labor among us on our behalf, that they may do so safely. This girl from Helltown insists. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. All right. We'll now bring up Brandy Ryder as our next speaker. I will mention, I don't know if John did, it's five minutes, and we are timing it, and we do have a little flash card for the one minute remaining.
Yeah, we'll give you a one minute.
I won't need it, but thank you.
Thanks, Brandy.
Again, I'm Brandy Ryder. I'm here on behalf of Senator Chris Dush. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The Senator is in Harrisburg doing budget negotiations and some other important things, so I'm happy to be here on his behalf. Senator Dush does not have any opposition of the idea of ensuring that responsible contractors are being used for public projects. As a matter of fact, Senator Dush feels like contractors acting in bad faith on public projects are a legitimate and reoccurring problem. However, Senator Dush does not feel like the current Responsible Contractor Ordinance proposed by Center County only ensures that responsible contractors are being used. It is the Senator's opinion that this ordinance will also either force contractors to use union labor or ensure that these projects are only awarded to union contractors. Senator Dush also has an issue with the administration of the Responsible Contractor Ordinance, or RCO. This RCO will not only include more work on the side of the contractors by requiring them to provide documentation, but it will also require more work by the county to receive, maintain, and evaluate documentation. For example, how will the county determine whether a component is a non-standard good and subject to the custom fabrication requirements in Section 2 of the ordinance? How will the contractor prove that a specific component that falls under the custom fabrication requirement was made under prevailing wage? In conclusion, Senator Dush agrees with the sentiment behind the ordinance. There is an issue with bad-faith contracting in public works. However, Senator Dush does not feel like the ordinance, as it currently reads, is fair to non-union contractors or enforceable. Under safety, if ensuring safety on site is truly the goal, an effective and already-existing method for evaluating a bidder could be any combination of the following. Dart rates, days away restricted or transferred, an OSHA calculation based on workers' compensation injuries, TRIR rates, total recordable incident rate, a measure of occupational health and safety based on the number of safety incidents reported against the number of workers present and the number of hours worked, EMR, experience modification rating. The typical rate is 1.0, which means that a contractor is found to be no more or less risky than a majority of other contractors. A rating under 1.0 is considered good, while above 1.0 is riskier. Or OSHA 300, a contractor's log of work-related injuries and illnesses. Under apprentice, this RCO mandates a percentage of the craft labor workforce employed on the project shall be comprised of persons completing an apprenticeship training program. This RCO mandates a 70% threshold. General contractors and subcontractors cannot meet this requirement without a labor union apprenticeship prior, program per the RCO. This 70% threshold steers nearly all public work to union contractors and will likely shift those jobs to tradesmen outside the local area, since the majority of union contractors come from the Philadelphia and Pittsburgh regions. The most current RCO in Center County has a goal of providing good wages and benefits for the local community, but will instead send those wages outside its borders. The U.S. Department of Labor apprenticeship website shows the closest programs are flooring in New Jersey, glacier in Illinois, insulation in Philadelphia, landscaping in Pittsburgh, and demo in South Carolina. And under prefabrication, we, we are unclear how the prefabrication as part of Section 2, RCO Subsection 3 will be implemented. How does the county expect to not only define custom fabrication, but also how those materials are used? We are also unclear on if the county truly believes that restricting all fabrication of materials to only occur on the work site will bring a cost savings. How will the county have oversight to ensure that this is being followed by everyone in the supply chain? Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. All right. Speaker number three, Margie Swoboda.
Good morning. My name is Margie Swoboda, Houston Township. I am speaking today in favor of the proposed RCO ordinance. I have read the ordinance and all of the work that went into it. I appreciate the facts that were presented today by you, John. I believe that every worker should be safe, whether it is during the demolition stage, where our workers are possibly working with asbestos, and should be provided with masks or the excavation stages where dangerous equipment is being used. The workers should be given everything they need to be safe. From our hairdressers to helicopter pilots to our dentists and doctors, we all need to constantly improve our skills. We need to include but not limit the continuing education of our workers to classroom instruction and our proper safety equipment. It is a known fact to all of us that contractors are importing workers from outside the area. We hear the different languages being spoken, and we see the, all of the out-of-state license plates. We see the vans that pull up to the construction sites, and several labor, laborers hop out and head to their job site for the day. Are these workers trained in their positions? I wonder how we would react if our EMS and fire departments would do this type of recruitment of workers to handle our emergencies. I am sure that our insurance carriers would quickly put a stop to this. There are over 1,500 regulatory programs across the state that many workers have taken advantage of. We need to support these programs if, and if our workers are not skilled, we need to help them get involved with that. If we don't, the result is poor craftsmanship and crappy, crappy buildings, not to mention a potentially dangerous work environment for people who are being exploited. What about that building in the back of Sam's Club that needs to be demolished because of mold and rot issues and a total waste of money? Our tax dollars are precious to all of us. Protect our workers and our taxes. I appreciate the work that went into this proposed RCO. It is important to keep our workers safe. Thank you for your consideration for the workers in this construction industry, one of which happens to be my son. Thank you.
Thank you, Margie. All right. Speaker number four, Brian, is it Pomeroy?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Brian Pomeroy. I reside in Middle Paxton Township, Dauphin County, and Dauphin County does have a Responsible Contractor Ordinance in place. I'm speaking here today as the Secretary-Treasurer of the Central Pennsylvania Building Trades. Our affiliates collectively have over 5,700 men and women working in all aspects of the construction industry throughout central PA, including Center County, and we're not just based out of Philly and Pittsburgh. Collectively, our affiliates have several thousand apprentices in the regions of, well, many in Center County. I myself am a graduate of a certified Class A apprenticeship program. I graduated from the Central Pennsylvania Carpenter's JATC in 1994. I am a second-generation carpenter. My son Zachary is now a third-generation carpenter in his second year of the same program that I was with. There's two types of apprenticeship that I'll talk about briefly. One is a certified. That means that the, it's registered with the city, the, the state and the federal governments and authorities. The other is a Class A. It means they actually produce graduates. Lots of organizations and companies claim to have apprenticeship programs. Few actually produce graduates of any number. It's a way to skirt laws and get funding that they technically don't deserve. They just don't produce the graduates. Next, I want to touch a little bit about my own personal work history. I mainly was an interior/exterior carpenter, working with metal studs and drywall all around the mid-state area. Over the years, I worked on several projects in State College region and several at the university, dormitories, Smeale Campus of Business, et cetera. As a carpenter, I took pride in what we built. Like many of the men and women in this room, we can attest showing family members what we helped to build. It's a pride thing that we all do. I was fortunate to work for the same company, or should I say Responsible Contractor, for most of my 17 years in the field. While I was working on construction projects, I had the privilege of working with and training several apprentices and giving them what guidance I possibly could. Some of those apprentices are now supervising large projects in the mid-state region. One is up in Center County in Toftrees. It's a great feeling knowing that you have helped another person by mentoring their life in work and family, seeing them succeed. That is what responsible peoples do. During those years working for the Responsible Contractor that I worked for, we never had any issues with our paychecks, medical contributions, and especially our retirement benefits. They were all paid timely and accounted for, unlike one contractor that is opposing this Responsible Contractor Ordinance. And I also wanted to spell some lies that are being dispersed around north-central PA about the ordinance. RCO will only apply as to county work. I heard people say, that there are emails saying that it means all jobs. That's not true. It's just jobs issued by Center County government. They say it's for unions. The word "union" is not in the language one single time. That is also not true. There's also emails out there that claim that there is no threshold for the work. That is also knows true, not true. The law that would pertain to jobs over $250,000, which realistically wouldn't apply to many jobs over the course of a 10-year period. Another note is worth the reporting on is it's been in some emails and posts that the ordinance requires prevailing wage. That is something that's already required and mandated under the state of Pennsylvania under the Prevailing Wage Act. At the end of the day, this measure is about safety. Every worker on every job site has the right to be safe, properly trained, respected, and have the opportunity to go home at the end of the day to their family. You don't have to be union. You just have to properly train your workforce. Think about the title, Responsible Contractor Ordinance. We all should want things done responsibly in Center County and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It looks like person number five is already ready. Walt, is it Krasznowski?
Very good. Krasznowski. Good morning, Chairman Higgins, Vice Chairman Concepcion, and Commissioner Dershowm. My name is Walt Krasznowski. I don't hail from Center County. I hail from three and a half hours away from here. I drove three and a half hours to come and talk to you folks this morning about this very important topic, because like you, I serve in local government, and I look at these contracts, and I'm charged with letting these contracts out, reviewing these contracts on a monthly basis. So, you have my written testimony in front of me, but I will skip through a lot of it and hit the highlights. Before discussing the finer points of Responsible Contracting Ordinances, it's important to point out and put into perspective some of the reasons why the prevailing wage laws in the Prevailing Wage Act was established. The prevailing wage laws were put into place to protect taxpayers and ratepayers' financial interest in publicly-funded construction projects. There is also another key component to these laws, and that is the proper bidding process and contracting for these projects. These laws were established to put all bidding contractors on a level playing surface regardless of labor affiliation by establishing bidding, a consistent bidding process. Wage determinations and other bidding instructions are published as part of the bid package for prevailing wage and public works projects and are available to all prospective bidders. If a bidding contractor is properly using the wage determination and bidding instructions published as part of the bid package, they have every and all equal opportunity to share, to secure the contract for these projects. The wage, the disparity in bid amounts, I'll skip over. You, you can read it on your own, but a, as a person like you that serves in local government, when you see great disparities in these, in these contracts amounts, let it raise a, let a red flag to you, because there should not be, in prevailing wage and public works bidding, there should not be a 30% disparity. That's an indication that the, the low-ball contractor is cheating. On-the-job training. Without Responsible Contractor Ordinances, taxpayers and ratepayers could be paying top dollar to provide on-the-job training to an unscrupulous contractor's workforce. My explanation. Wage determinations are established for prevailing wage or public work projects differ considerably from trade to trade. The wage determination reflects the skill set and level of training of a worker. Unscrupulous contractors and bad actors will often pay the same person several different trades in one given day or at one pay period. Example, the unscrupulous contractor could categorize John Q. Public to work two hours as an operator, work the next two hours in the same day as a plumber, work the next two hours the same day as a laborer, work the next two hours in the same day as a, a finisher to finish the trench that he has already dug. to finish the trench that he has already dug. This method describes and promotes the old saying, "Jack of all trades and master of none." What is worker John Q. Public's skill set or certification? Has John Q. Public been properly trained in any of the trades outlined, or is he just receiving on-the-job training? Responsible contractor ordinances help to ensure that the worker is being paid for a specific task, has been in fact properly trained, and possesses the appropriate skill set and certifications to properly facilitate the task. Responsible contractor ordinances also support apprenticeship programs properly registered and certified under the State Department of Labor and Industry. In conclusion, opponents to responsible contractor ordinances want you to believe that it will exclude contractors from bidding public or prevailing wage work. They will also want you to believe that the ordinance is stacks-to-deck to contractors affiliated with organized labor. Both statements cannot be further from the truth. As previously stated, if a contractor, regardless of labor affiliation, is bidding on a project apples-for-apples, it is protected, that contractor is protected, under the prevailing wage laws and will also be protected under this responsible contractor ordinance. These ordinances help ensure quality workmanship, promote efficiency in the workplace, and save taxpayer dollars. Thanks for letting me speak this morning. I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you very much, Walt. Now we move to speaker number six, Jim Enders.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. My name is Jim Enders. I am a resident of Jefferson Township in Dauphin County. However, my family has owned a cabin here in Haynes Township for over a hundred years. I am currently the president of the Central Pennsylvania Building and Construction Trades Council out of Harrisburg. I am also the business manager of the United Association of Plumbers, Pipefitters, and HVAC Service Technicians Local Union 520 in Harrisburg. Center County lies within our jurisdiction, and we are very proud of the work that we have done throughout this county and the surrounding communities. Local 520 is an excellent alternative to a trade school and/or college because we offer tuition-free training in our apprenticeship program. Apprenticeship programs such as ours are a proven model for developing a skilled workforce. They help to open doors and break down barriers that many people face in today's society. Apprenticeship programs aren't just about training young men and women in the beginning of their careers. They offer continuous education, which keeps the entire workforce trained in the latest techniques and new processes. They offer employees a place to renew certifications, update their skills, OSHA-10, OSHA-30, and even OSHA-500-hour programs, CPR and first aid. The list goes on and on with training that protects the worker, the contractor, and ultimately the customer, again, all tuition-free. The apprentices earn while they learn. Many apprenticeships offer college credits. Local 520's apprentices receive forty-five college credits at the completion of their five-year program towards an associate degree in construction management and supervision. These training centers ensure that the contractors will utilize them and getting qualified workers to fabricate and install materials accurately, correctly, and safely. This isn't more about non-union versus union. This is about employers that invest in workers' training and education and those that do not. The current skilled labor shortage across the nation has created the situation where, at times, a few contractors may need to hire untrained personnel. Many are oftentimes expected to learn their trade or multiple trades at the same time while on the job at the cost and expense of the customer. In reality, some of these individuals are laid off before the job is complete and had a chance to learn much of anything. Apprenticeship programs supply qualified men and women that are trained in the field of their profession, and those individuals continue their education whether they are employed or not. I can't for the life of me understand why anyone would not advocate for a certified apprenticeship training program or support an ordinance that promotes the use of one. Our apprenticeship training program at Local 520 has been working great for seventy years. My seventeen-year-old son began his career there a month ago and is the fourth consecutive generation of my family to do so, and I am very proud of him. You may call me biased, but I'm proud of our heritage and I take pride every day promoting what we do. When a properly-trained apprentice or journeyman is given the proper tools, quality material, and an organized plan, the work is done on time and within budget the first time. And if this is the type of work you want done in Center County, please pass the ordinance. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Jim. Appreciate that. Our next speaker is also named Jim. It's Jim Wilshire.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim Wilshire with Associated Builders and Contractors Keystone Chapter, based in Mannheim, Lancaster County, but we serve many contractors and subcontractors here in Center County. As far as why I'm here today, we're here to talk about a lot of unanswered questions that have come up since the first meetings in the beginning of the year. We reached out several times. We haven't gotten information. We haven't had answers. We've made suggestions on things like EMR that have not been included in this ordinance that you're going to be voting on today, most likely. All of our questions have been left ignored. I'm sure you've heard a lot of support from a lot of proponents about this. We also just want to encourage you to also remember there's been a lot of other organizations and individuals that have expressed concerns and asked questions that should be equally considered when you're looking at this ordinance. Some of the things that I want to speak about today have already been raised, so I'll skip to some of the other points that haven't been raised. On free fabricated and non-standard goods, this is an area that has very little guidance. I appreciate that Mr. Frannick had said that lines one forty-three through one forty-nine include that information, but six lines does not really cover a lot of a monumental change to how you're going to be doing procurement in Center County. You don't explain a lot of details that would be needed for that. We don't understand how you're going to enforce that provision. Are you expecting the Department of Labor and Industry to enforce that? Is that something the county is going to enforce? Is that something a DGS is going to enforce? Are you expecting that the contractor, the subcontractor is going to police everyone that's in the supply chain? That's putting a lot on them, and that is where some of the prevailing wage comments can come from, if that's going to apply to everyone in the supply chain. As I said, there's a lot of questions that have been answered on that as well as others, but if you want to make sure that everyone's in compliance, which we would, and many of the contractors and subcontractors would want to make sure they're in compliance, having answers to those very important questions is important at the beginning of the process, not after it's begun. If you're going to put it on those contractors and subcontractors, there's going to be questions that come up and it's going to cause delays, and that's not going to get the project done on time. There's no latitude for anyone that's acting in good faith or is just confused because there's been lack of guidance. I know that I've heard a lot of proponents in this room over the past couple hearings talk about how broadly RCOs have worked in other areas and that this RCO has been proven true, but that is not correct when prefabrication on standard goods has not been in any other RCO that has been put in any other ordinance. I have not seen it anywhere. It is a big risk to ask contractors to put all that on themselves, and as far as proponents of RCOs go, they've said that it's worked in a lot of other areas, but we haven't heard where it hasn't worked, areas like Redding, where they had very few bids and it was over. We haven't heard about Colonial School District, where they had to rescind the ordinance because of poor project bids and being over. We haven't heard about Allentown, where they're still trying to wrestle with what to do with the apprenticeship threshold. We continue to see that when these RCOs are presented, there's a lack of transparency, there's a lack of discussion, and unfortunately, this is starting to happen here in Center County, and we think that taxpayers in Center County deserve better. We encourage you to just have an open dialogue, try to encourage conversation of everyone that's going to be involved with the RCO, so we can have our questions and answers so that it could be a more effective ordinance so that it's for the best of Center County. You heard about some of the other registered apprenticeship programs where you'd be seeing other people from other states, because that's just the nature of where some of those apprenticeships lie. That's not something we want to see happen. We want to have more Center County and more local workers coming here, not having people from those other apprenticeship programs. So I'll conclude my comments.
Great. Thank you, Jim. Our next one is speaker number eight. Bill, is it Dorward?
Dorward.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Bill Dorward. I do live in the Berks County area. I'm a sheet metal worker by craft, business agent with Local Nineteen. I'm also the president of the Berks County Building Trades, as we just heard, concerning the RCO in Redding. That language is in the Redding RCO as we speak right now for the off-site fabrication. There has been one job, when this thing first came out, where the city had reached out to us and asked our opinion on it about a concrete skate park. There was a low turnout on that bid. It was not done under the RCO language because it was so new and fresh. I threw away most of my notes here today because a lot of people have spoken about a lot of this, different issues that I had in mind, so I'm pretty much going to speak from the heart. This RCO is imperative, in my opinion. It's about education. I can remember graduating in nineteen eighty-nine from Salisbury High School in Allentown, Pennsylvania, and going through high school, the teachers would always tell us, techies, if you will, that if you didn't go to college, you weren't going to amount to anything. I got news for them. I went through a four-year apprenticeship program to sheet metal workers Local Nineteen. By the time I graduated in ninety-four, I was purchasing my first home, while the rest of my buddies, my friends, were going through college still and still have some of that debt today. Some of them don't even have their own homes yet, ironically enough, because they're still paying on these college loans. COVID hit. I think this country finally woke up. We are at a loss for workers today across this country, not just here in Center County, not in Berks County, not in Lehigh Valley, across this country. We are lagging because of the unqualified and untrained workforce that we have out there today. It is imperative that you get these apprenticeship programs. It is imperative that people work on these buildings that have an education process behind them so they understand what to do and what not to do. As a sheet metal worker, we deal with a lot of different instances with heating and air conditioning, stair pressurization, fire dampers, smoke dampers. I ran work in a lot of hospitals in the Lehigh Valley, Cedar Crest Hospital, Seventeenth and Chu, Mullenberg, I can go on and on and on. And some of the work that you've seen in some of these places is horrifying, where fire dampers weren't installed the correct way, ironically enough because people weren't taught. I've worked for non-signatory contractors where they hire from temp agencies, where one day a guy's a carpenter, the next day he comes to that sheet metal contractor, and now he is a master mechanic sheet metal worker. How? Why would anybody deny an individual, a worker, or a citizen of this country, the opportunity to educate themselves on what they do and what they do for the public? Because when it comes to safety, it's not just about the safety of that individual and the job. We, as construction workers, need to have a revolving head and look out for everybody around us. You need to know what's going on, who your surroundings are. The education process of this, you heard one of the other gentlemen talk about the college. We believe in the college and education so much that we have signed on to colleges to give them their career path, not only as a master of their craft, but also if they want to exceed and move on to a certificate from a university, college, and have on. OSHA, since we're talking about safety. Twelve people a day in the United States, not in a third-world country, twelve people a day, look the website up, die in this country on construction sites. We don't think it's imperative to go home. We are one of the only crafts, and this isn't a hit on firemen or police or EMS or our military. We leave the house in the morning and we don't know if we're coming home. And I can speak from experience because I had somebody pick up a corner of a scaffold twenty-five feet in the air and tip it over and break all kinds of bones. We need to protect everybody, the worker, the company, and the people in our community that are working and residing in these buildings every day. In my opinion, there are a lot of contractors out there that have individuals doing all these different crafts, once again, jack of all, master of none. We need to make sure that our people are doing the right things across the board here. Again, I stand here in support of this, and I thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you very much, Bill. We're now moving to our next speaker, Connor Lewis. If you'd let Connor in, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Connor Lewis, and I'm a Center County taxpayer, resident of State College Borough, a proud member of TNG CWA Local Thirty-two oh three five, and president of Seven Mountains AFL-CIO, representing seven thousand members of union households across Center County. I could list numbers and facts and get into details of this policy. You've heard a lot about that from speakers on both sides. Facts like Center County's twenty-point-eight million dollars in stolen wages recovered for workers by state and federal government since twenty eighteen. Facts like the five construction workers, the majority in construction, who have died on the job in Center County since twenty eighteen, and we heard this morning, if you listened to the Tor Michael Show, that the CEO of ABC Keystone isn't aware of these deaths. Facts like the Center Daily Times report in August of twenty twenty-two stating that workplace deaths were up forty percent in south-central Pennsylvania, including Center County, the area which ABC Keystone covers. Facts like the studied benefits of responsible contractor ordinances, including increased bid competition without increased project costs, or the fact that participation and completion numbers in registered apprenticeships have grown by over a hundred percent in the last ten years, that it's well-established that apprenticeships are the best standard of quality workforce preparation in the skilled construction trades, that there are both union and non-union apprenticeships, and that supporting apprenticeships is a bipartisan consensus in both Harrisburg and Washington. Others will talk more about facts. I want to talk about values. Working families like the working families that my Labor Council represents want a level playing field. We want decent treatment from our employers and we want to be paid a fair wage for a hard day's work. We want to know that when we pay our taxes, those dollars are responsibly invested by our government in quality public goods and services that strengthen the entire community. And when those values aren't upheld, we work to fix that, whether or not it directly impacts us. Because my values, both for my union and for my faith, teach me that the answer to "Am I my brother's keeper?" is yes. That's why this ordinance matters to me, and that's why this ordinance matters to workers. Because it makes sure that there's a level playing field and that a small number of the Commonwealth's biggest contractors can't take advantage of the bidding system and rig it to their advantage. Because it makes sure that employees are trained appropriately and paid the wage that they're owed, and that we don't need to simply trust that's happening, we can verify that it's happening. And because it makes sure the government is empowered to wisely invest our tax dollars, that there is a clear set of expectations for bidding on public projects, that government can consider a worker's right to a safe job and to be paid the wage they're owed, the government can consider whether a contractor respects the law of the land, whether it's local, state, or federal law, and the government can consider the contractor's job quality and performance before deciding where our money, our money, goes. Counties and municipalities encompassing nearly half of Pennsylvania's population, from Westmoreland to Bucks County, from Upper Darby to Harrisburg, have responsible contractor policies or policies that go even beyond responsible contractor policies. They are common, they are tested, and they are effective, and any claim to the contrary is a lie intended to deceive the public and to mislead taxpayers in Center County. Now you'll hear and you've heard from some of the Commonwealth's biggest contractors and industry associations that they're the underdog in all of this, that this is a David and Goliath story and they're playing the part of David. One of the contractors in this room received one-point-seven billion in tax dollars from PennDOT alone between two thousand and three and twenty eighteen, and at least two have ranked in the top ten recipients of PennDOT contracts statewide. They can cut personal checks for fifty-thousand-dollar political contributions without a second thought. They are not David in this story. And let me be clear that every single contractor in this room can meet the ordinance's requirements, which protects workers and taxpayers should they choose to do so. Now should this pass, it'll be a landmark ordinance that'll benefit our Center County community by making sure that there's a more level playing field, that our public projects will be completed on budget, on time, and with the highest quality, that when workers put in a hard day's work on a county job site, they know they'll put in a hard day's work on a county job site, they know they'll get paid the wage they're owed, and that when they're done for the day, they'll go home safe to their loved ones. That's why working families of Seven Mountains AFL-CIO support this ordinance and urge its passage. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Connor. Now we'll move to speaker number 10. David, is it Sloan?
Good morning. David Sloed, I am the president and CEO of ABC Keystone Chapter. We represent 33 counties in central Pennsylvania. And I'm going to go off my notes because a lot has been said already. First, I want to clarify, my comments this morning were, I was aware of the two deaths that have happened recently within Center County. I have asked for somebody to give me what the other three are. Anytime there's a death on a job site is tragic. As I said on the radio show, I'm aware of two in Philadelphia and one in York in the last year, and that is all tragic. All that to say, a lot of the speakers before me, my folks from the unions, I agree with a lot of what they said. We're not opposed to safety. We're not opposed to education and training. In fact, this ordinance has been brought forth around safety. Nothing matter with that. There's not a single thing that was in this ordinance from a safety perspective that we disagreed with. In fact, we encouraged stricter requirements. I applaud Senator Doss's comments and agree. If you really want a safe ordinance, put metrics behind it. Don't get me wrong, training people in safety is imperative. Anybody that works on a job site should have 10-hour OSHA. Anybody that's supervising anybody on a job site should have OSHA 30. Does that ensure they're going to be safe? Not necessarily. But I think those requirements, in addition to the ones that the senator has proposed, would strengthen the safety. Where I do get a little confused is, they say that every contractor in this room can meet this ordinance. I know for a fact that's not true, because it says 70% of anybody working on the job site must either have completed or be enrolled in an apprenticeship program. I know these contractors, they're members of ours, and they have people enrolled in our program, they've graduated some. And all that to say is, 70%, they cannot meet. In fact, very few, definitely small and midsize contractors can meet that, and a lot of the larger ones cannot as well. We're a proponent of apprenticeship. Again, I would, I appreciate the Class A comment because I'm proud to say we have a registered program, and I will put our completion rates on line with the other programs. There is only one type of apprenticeship program in the state of Pennsylvania, it's called a registered apprenticeship program. I'll be happy to sit at the table with my brethren to get rid of the bad actors because we know they exist. But all that to say is, the members that are participating in our program have that option. However, what we're discounting are those education programs throughout the state that train construction workers. Penn Tech, owned by Penn State, one of the best technical colleges in the country, that is Stevens. We take students out of our career technology centers, articulating them into apprenticeship programs, and in some cases, not immediately. Why are we not going to allow these folks to work on jobs? Why are we going to discount the education and training they've had? I have no problem with education. In fact, I would say to any responsible contractor, education should be part of your model, safety should be paramount and first. So let's handle the safety, not a problem. The other thing I would like to point out is on the expansion of prevailing wage. To my colleague's point, I'm not sure how the county is going to administer that. Furthermore, in studying the state statute on prevailing wage, there's a number of points in the State Prevailing Wage Act which this ordinance falls out of line with. We believe it's going to open the county to litigation on that point alone. And again, you start adding prevailing wage to things coming from off-site and even potentially out-of-state, if that's even viable, the cost of your projects will go up. To say that you're going to do it less expensive won't happen. I guess the final comment I would have, you have an escape clause in this ordinance. So if this ordinance is so dire, why do we have an escape clause? To me, that's disingenuous with why we brought the ordinance forward. Let's handle safety, let's recognize education and training more than just apprenticeship. I would say, let's have a discussion around this ordinance, and would request that you table this till further discussion can be held. Thank you.
Thank you, David. We'll move on to speaker number 11, Greg Scott.
Good morning. My name is Greg Scott. I'm the president and CEO of the Chamber of Business and Industry of Center County. And I'm here today to express the chamber's concerns with the ordinance while representing the collective sentiment of the chamber's board, membership, and our ongoing commitment to serve as the authoritative voice of business in Center County. The chamber recognizes and appreciates the county's objective of promoting accountability, quality, and safety in public projects. However, the RCO's requirements, such as the mandate that 70% of the craft workforce, labor workforce, have completed a formally registered apprentice training program, and the adherence to the Pennsylvania Prevailing Wage Act 43 for off-site custom fabrication work will impose unnecessary and burdensome restrictions on local contractors. If the RCO is adopted, this ordinance will effectively exclude many of our local contractors and businesses, potentially in favor of county, of out-of-county entities, from participating in county projects exceeding $250,000, limiting their ability to contribute to the growth and development of our region. Again, while the chamber supports the county's aim to ensure accountability, this ordinance imposes excessive restrictions that will negatively impact our local contractors and ancillary businesses. The chamber believes in fostering a competitive and inclusive business environment that benefits our entire community. Therefore, the chamber urges the Center County Board of Commissioners to reconsider this ordinance and seek alternative solutions that uphold the quality and safety while preserving access for all of our local contractors. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. All right, now, I think 12 was on another page. Looks like Mary Bellman or Bellmeyer.
Good morning. My name is Mary Bellman. I live in Patton Township. I've lived here for 10 years, and my day job is Director of Labor Education at Penn State. In that role, I teach students about work in the United States. I teach them for a day on what happens, both labor history and our current state of worker safety in this country. I'm also married to someone who goes to work every day, is a journey worker, and, you know, sometimes works in a harness, and I think about safety as something that affects me personally, even though you might think I'm a college professor. And in my role in, as Director of Labor Education, we do training on workers' rights and with union members across the state of Pennsylvania. I'm here to speak in favor of the ordinance because what bothers me is what's happening in our own backyard around safety, not just the five deaths, but there have been many, many accidents and injuries that I feel like haven't been raised. And I'm just going to add a couple of things that haven't been said, because a lot has already been said. I want to make sure that people, in my experience and everything I've read and taught in my career, I know that trained workers are actually the best safety standard. You can do lots of other things, but having workers who know how to do their job and know what's a safe thing to do and a safe thing not to do, so beyond the OSHA training, that is the best protection for our workforce. And I believe that, you know, having the percentage of craft labor and apprenticeship programs is, you know, the best way to do that. I do tell my college students also about apprenticeships, just in case college doesn't work out. So I really believe that that's true, and I think that's what our, you know, years and years of experience show. I also want to make sure people are aware of, there have been studies done on responsible bidding elsewhere, like the Illinois Economic Policy Institute's work. They show that there's an increase of local contractors that win the bids. I just, I really feel like there's fear mongering going on here. Even the unionized training locations, they represent people across the state, even if the training center is located not here in Center County. So, and as other people have said, there are many, many journey workers and apprentices right here in Center County. Finally, I would just say that there are, nationally in our country right now, there is backsliding on worker standards and workers' rights. There are states that have allowing increased child labor, all kinds of things, where we're taking a step backwards. I don't want to explain that to my children or my students. I want to live in a county where we're actually taking a step forward in favor of increasing standards for all working people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mary, now we move to speaker number 13, Hillary Caldwell.
Hi. As noted, my name is Hillary Caldwell, and I am a resident of the State College Borough. I thank Jessica, Margie, Brian, Walt, Jim, Bill, Connor, and Mary for their prior statements, and thank those who came from out of town to voice their support. I'm speaking to you today not as the daughter of a contractor who has context for the labor, challenges, and dangers of working on a project, or has some, as someone who has suffered a needless workplace injury without being able to hold their employer accountable, but simply as someone who cares deeply about the working conditions of people in the county and someone who believes that local government works best when it's working for its working people, whether it's residents or those who come here for employment. A responsible contractor ordinance for Center County government projects would finally define what responsible means in the clause for contractors bidding on county government projects, and rule out companies that do not meet these requirements due to negligence, unlawful activity, or inadequate training for their contractors or subcontractors, even if they're the lowest bidder. Not only is that a benefit to Center County taxpayers, like many of us here, who fund these projects, because it will mean a higher quality of work in the contracts given amount of time, rather than result in change orders, delays, and potential mistakes, ultimately creating more work, it opens up the bidding process to more local companies, not just corporations that position themselves as small business that typically make the lowest bid, which ironically was charged as the largest wage theft case in U.S. history. As a taxpayer, I would rather pay a little bit more to ensure that high quality of work and worker safety. And perhaps most importantly, it would put in place protocols to protect workers, whether on the job site, in training, or through proper classification to ensure correct wages. The argument against union labor is fallacious and grasping at straws. There is no language in the RCO that indicates a preference of union employment. Both non-union and union contractors hold apprenticeships and training programs and are equally eligible to build for projects. This RCO simply assures that they meet safety and training requirements. And to clarify, I am not a member of a union. I do wonder, though, why the argument against union labor has been so present and such a hot-button issue. Is it because those at the top fear collective organizing? I'd say follow the money. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the five workers that have died on a job site in Center County since 2018, and that we ranked second in the region for worker deaths. That is not a statistic of which to be proud. I think of the families and loved ones of those lost while we're here today. May their memories be a blessing. It should also be noted, as many others have done, that Center County is not alone in this venture. As several previous speakers have demonstrated, municipalities, cities, and counties across Pennsylvania have enacted RCOs and have done so successfully. But this positions Center County to become a leader and model in the region, and this is an opportunity not to be missed. And for those who call the RCO bad governance, what I have to say is this. To me, the government passing legislation to ensure the safety and livelihoods of those working for the government is an exact example of what good governance is and should be. I thank the commissioners past and present who have brought this RCO to the table and encourage all to vote in favor of passing it. Furthermore, I would encourage municipalities in the county to adopt their own RCOs. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you, Hillary. We'll now move on to speaker number 14, Pat Irwin.
I won't be able to speak that fast. So I guess I'm standing up here to discuss the RCO, but not necessarily whether it's a good idea or not, but whether it's passed the way it's written. So the first thing is the safety execution. The OSHA 10 and OSHA 30 are a good start, but as someone who works in the construction industry and has for over 30 years, that is only a foundation. It does not speak to safety planning and execution. We had some comments here earlier about the EMR. The EMR is a measure of your performance, not just a certification. So there's EMR, there's ISO, and that, you know, that has already been discussed. And the industry baseline of being 1.0, we currently at Leonard S. Furrier are at 0.76, which means we are better than 24% of the industry. As I, as I bring these points up, I should have said at the beginning, the way it is written now would preclude us from competing. The training, I guess, and maybe you'll talk about this in your discussion period, I wonder where you believe the workforce will come from in terms of both contractors and trades professionals. At Leonard S. Furrier, I can only talk about what we do, so we have our own in-house training department. But we know, even though we have a registered apprenticeship program, that we know that apprenticeship is only one means, as I talked about in the last hearing. Apprenticeship, task-specific training, and project-specific training are all key to the workforce. Now, as we know through, through the pandemic, that not all people learn the same, and to only present one model as a basis for the responsible contractor ordinance, I think misses the mark in terms of how people, how people learn and can be trained. There's no argument in terms of the importance of training, both in safety and in the trades. The other thing is, it says in the ordinance, it talks about 70% have completed or enrolled. I can understand the completed, I don't understand the or enrolled, because we don't know at what point these people are in their training. So I don't know why they would, we classify as going towards the percentage. The, the training we know has to be robust. We know from our, from our own experience at our company that it is, it is not just classroom, it's classroom and hands-on, which I know the apprenticeship is based on, but a lot of it is, a lot of it is mentorship, a lot of it is having to get out in the field and deal with situations that don't simply meet the classroom. The other thing that I question is the, the two thresholds, the $250,000 threshold. We are, in the area, we are looked at as a larger contractor, but we, we pride ourselves on our own self-performance, and a $250,000 job is still a job to us. So I would, I would argue that if the RCO is important, it, there should not be a number. The RCO, if it's enacted with proper language, I don't, I don't know why a $250,000 job, which, which really gives no credence to the, the complexity and/or the schedule, that 250,000, I think, is probably an arbitrary number. The other thing is, if there's not enough bidders and, or one, or one bid or exceed the budget, I also question why the RCO would then be thrown out, because if we are trying to protect workers, the fact of lack of competition should not, should not then predicate removing the RCO. I'm trying. The other thing is, in terms of the, for us, in particular, for competition, there are local union GCs, and I know we're saying it's not a union-only thing, but Jace Yor and GM McCrossan, who are local contractors, Joe Orr and Bob Leahy, who I am very good friends with, they are good contractors, but I can just tell you, for the way it is currently written, we will not be able to compete. And I wrote an email to the three of you about the, you attended the Ferguson Township Public Works Building, the award ceremony where we were the lead GC. We won't, if, if other townships would enact it, we wouldn't be on that project. And, you know, we are State College Borough Building, Shlo Library, B. Raven Partner Garage, Ferguson Township. These are, these are facilities that I think the area is, is proud of. We were the leaders on those projects. So, so in closing, I'm here to represent the community, the industry, the art contractors and subcontractors and their families. And like I said in the email that I sent to you, we represent thousands of people who will not be, will be excluded if the RCO is, I want to make it clear, if the RCO is, remains worded the way it is. I don't want to say I'm against the RCO, but I think some key wording has to be done. And then in terms of the, the union membership, I would like to congratulate them because the trades, we know we have a worker shortage. We, you have to, the respect for the trades is needed and necessary. And I had someone from union membership reach out to me after the last meeting, which I really appreciated. And, you know, my grandfather, who started our company, was a, was a union member in the railroad and decided to go out and, and, and start his own business. So all we're looking for is that same, same opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. All right, I will move to speaker number 15, Jennifer Del Antonio.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Del Antonio, I'm Rush Township. I'm also with the vice president of the Center County Republicans. I am a lifelong Center County resident. I am a lifelong Center County resident, and part of our government says that we can petition our government to let them know what we are thinking. And so that's what I did, is I started a petition against the RCO. I have with me the petition, both, we had an online petition and also people could sign in person. And I just want to let you know, right now we have 350 signatures, but as I've been sitting here, we've gotten more signatures, so this would actually be more, but I had to print it out this morning. In this petition, we have, these are Center County residents. These people are large contractors, small contractors, excavators, landscaping, HVAC, realtors, pest control, trucking companies, real estate developers, oil company owners, and Amish, and other just tax-paying citizens of Center County. Unlike some of the people that spoke earlier, we actually pay the taxes of Center County and the salaries of the commissioners. So I would like to present the petition. Could I present to you, John? The people that have signed the petition have comments as well as to why they oppose it, and I agree with a lot of them. I can't speak like a lot of these people did as far as, you know, the actual RCO and why it is, you know, bad and all of that, you know, based on their experiences, but just as we, the people who pay taxes here in Center County, I am here in opposition.
Thank you, Jennifer. I think number sixteen is Ed Maxwell.
Good afternoon, I'm Ed Maxwell. I own Maxwell Trucking and Excavating, and we employ about sixty people. The $250,000 threshold, as stated before, is not a lot of money as projects go. So, some of these, especially the Trade Act, is strong. There's a lot of issues here that need to be done, safety, number one, but ask the sixty people that work for me if they feel like they're unfit paid, or if there's a safety issue on our job sites or quality of our work, ask our customers. I think there's some more work that could be done to this ordinance to include, not preclude, all of us non-union workers. Unions are unions, they're here, they're strong, the room is full of them, and they talk like we also do not know how to do quality work, and we do not know how to do safe work. What about the people that have worked for me that are sixty years old, fifty years old, been running dozers their entire life? Now, they have to go back to an apprenticeship program, and their kids are forty years old, trained by their fathers. We kind of have this idea today that unless you have an apprenticeship program, you can't run a safe company, and I disagree with that, and I think my employees will. So, maybe we table this and put a little more work into how we can include and not drive our local non-union men away from this community to go to work for Kinsley and Harrisburg or somebody else that's non-union. I think that's pretty important. There are people here that do not believe in the union, and they do pay our local taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. We'll move to number seventeen, Michelle Shelberg.
Yes, I'm Michelle Shelberg, and I'm the Center County Republican Committee Chairperson, and I'm here to represent we, the people of Center County. As Jen mentioned earlier, we posted a petition, and I'm going to read directly from those that signed the petition. Krista says, "This will cost taxpayers higher costs. We'll leave out a large amount of Center County local contractors, and these unions are big donors to the two Democrat commissioners who are pushing for this. The community as a whole does not want it." Paula says, "I believe all contractors should have equal opportunity to bid on and be awarded contracts." Mark says, "I'm a contractor, and this bill is not necessary. Anyone ever heard of a government overreach?" Chris says, "With the economy as harsh as it is, the last thing we need is an ordinance or law placing more restrictions on workers and giving consumers less choices, especially less economical choices. Stop this ordinance. We want freedom of commerce and services." Jody said, "The RCO-proposed ordinance is a scheme of quid pro quo for unions and unethical politicians. It will cost taxpayers and encourage shoddy construction." Dana says, "My husband will lose a significant amount of work as he works for a company that would not fall under this category." Jason says, "I'm signing because I disagree with the responsible contractor ordinance, and I want my elected representatives to know that they should not enact this harmful requirement." Teresa, "Unions tend to be expensive and use bully tactics. Our leaders should be free to choose the type of labor they deem is best for their constituents, not limited to some limited-interest groups." Michael says, "Believe the motivation for this proposal is to reward contributions from groups that will benefit from passage." Daniel, "I oppose government control of wages and interference by government to fix problems with the current selection system that haven't been identified." Rob says, "This proposed statute will not solve any existing problems, but would rather increase costs to taxpayers. Increase costs of construction, decrease quality, and increase government control in an area they have no expertise in, government does not belong." Kenneth, "This is nothing more than a feel-good act that is trying to fix a problem that has not been shown to exist." Ronald, "This ordinance is an attempt by the Democrat commissioners to impose themselves into a subject where they don't belong. Compensation of employers is not determined by county commissioners, but rather by the employers themselves based on job value and market. The Democrats and Center County government are attempting to force socialism on the county." Franklin, "This poorly thought-out ordinance restricts local contractor participation, will increase construction costs, and ultimately cost taxpayers more without any increase in value returned." Tom, "I am signing because I oppose the RCO. It will drive up the cost of construction, which will increase taxes, and it will disenfranchise local non-union contractors and their employees, many of whom are Center County residents. There's nothing wrong with the current bidding system. If safety is a concern, then Center County should hire their own representative to inspect the work that is being done to make sure it meets the plans and specifications, and to check for issues relating to safety." Christian, "Due process has not been given to the enactment of this ordinance. It is limiting and will harm our county." Christine, "It is not good for our community and will raise the cost of projects done in Center County. It also opens Center County workers being replaced by union employees from outside the Center County region. I have not heard any reason to support the measure other than Democrat talking points." Bruce, "This ordinance is obviously politically biased to give unfair contract preference to the unions that support those who drafted it. It will increase costs to the taxpayers and take money out of Center County without increasing job safety or project quality as it is proposed to do." Tiffany, "I do not want to take business away from small local business." Allison, "I am signing because this is bad for local contractors. The commissioners are beholden to the unions for their campaign contributions. The RCO will not yield any savings and will likely reduce the number of bids, as no local contractors will be able to satisfy the 70% apprenticeship work requirement, creating a monopoly which will cause local dollars to be sent out of the county, as virtually all contractors in Center County are merit shops. Additionally, there is no data proven that union contractors have a better safety record. If safety were the true concern, why doesn't the RCO use EMR or other nationally-recognized OSHA metrics? Thank you." These are the words of the people.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, we will move to Speaker eighteen, I believe it's Marie LaBrissey.
Good morning, Commissioners. Obviously, this is a subject that is important to all our residents and citizens, and I would just like to make a recommendation, and in the future, if we could have a venue that would allow people to see their commissioners at work, instead of people sitting in a room and the meeting being streamed to them, I think that's disrespect to them, and I feel that there should be something that we can do to accommodate our citizens that pay the salaries of our Center County workers. This is certainly a very important issue, and I think most people would like to be here in this room with us, whether they speak or not, and that's basically it.
Part of the issue is the CNET stream is located here.
Yes.
The CNET stream is located here, it's not movable, so.
No, I think there should be a venue, a large enough venue that everybody can be here in person. It doesn't have to be here. It could have been, you know, State College Auditorium, State College, I'm just saying, it should have been a venue where all the citizens could have been here.
All right, we will move to Speaker number nineteen, Jesse Barlow.
Good day, Commissioners. I'm Jesse Barlow. I live in State College. I am president of State College Borough Council, but I'm here as someone who has been a citizen of Center County for the last forty-two years. The criteria that we must always take in bidding contracts is that we take the low-bid contract with no other significant regulation, looks like a good idea on its face. The problem is that not all contractors are responsible, and such a criteria can encourage corner-cutting that infringes on workers' rights. Mr. Connor Lewis recently explained how that problem is, comes about, so I will not elaborate anymore, and the college professor sitting right next to me, and I apologize that I don't know your name, explained the following fact, is that over the years, we've tended to have a small number of bidders on our contracts, and responsible contracting ordinances result in more bidders and promote more fair competition. And if we get the lowest responsible bidder, then we get a real bargain, the bargain that we really would like out of our ordinance. I strongly encourage the Commissioners to pass this ordinance, and I thank you for bringing it forward. Good day, everyone, and thank you for listening to me today.
Thank you, Jesse. We'll move to Speaker number twenty, Zach Wimmer, Wilmer?
Hi. Okay, I'm Zach Wilmer, I'm from Bollesburg, it's a rural town over there, a little southern town. The first thing I thought about when I saw this meeting was announced was that it was 10:00 a.m. here. You notice that all the speakers before me and all the speakers after me dressed quite nicely. I came here today from a job site in Bollesburg. I'm the only working person here, standing here advocating for us. So next time, maybe we'll have it at cheats, about 6:00 a.m., maybe more people will come in. We'll be there. I wrote in the Wall Street Journal earlier this year that 40% of construction jobs would be retiring for 2031, and I'm here to tell you the reason that is, is because of pain. I've worked construction my entire adult life, my dad's worked construction his entire adult life, and there's a lot of pain. You can look at my hands, I got scars, broken fingers. My dad can barely walk, and that's because we've worked for people that don't even care about us. All right, 33% of construction workers have a musculoskeletal disorder. My dad's one of those people. My childhood, my dad couldn't throw a catch at me, couldn't do anything with me, because he was hurting. A quarter of all construction workers have a substance use disorder. They account for the majority of workplace overdoses of opioids, and not addressing those concerns would be a great mistake. So I'm going to leave you with that.
Thank you, Zach. Powerful personal testimony. Move to Speaker number twenty-one, Ken Lang.
I'm just going to start with a couple of observations. I will say that those in support of this ordinance are very well organized. It's interesting to note that many of those providing testimony here today are from far outside of our community, and who would be in a position to gain from this ordinance as it stands, as it is written now. I also want to underscore some of the remarks of others who have been opposed to this. In particular, we share a value for safety. There's sort of this straw man characterization that anyone who's opposed to this ordinance is opposed to safety somehow. That couldn't be further from the truth. There is a way to have this conversation. My observation is about process and tactics that are being used in this subject, and the process is not transparent, the process is not thorough, and the tactics that are being used are pretty clearly, I don't know, they're not appropriate. We share a value for safety. It's absurd to suggest that because the word "union" is not in the ordinance that it won't favor unions. I don't have confidence that the ordinance as written won't have the negative consequences that many are expressing concerns about. This is a rational concern, it's not fear-mongering. Those who are opposed to this ordinance are not fear-mongering. We have legitimate concerns that we would like to talk out in detail with our commissioners. We would like to have a rational conversation and not five minutes behind a microphone without any back and forth. This is not the way to make this kind of change in our community. The ordinance will impose clear financial hardship on many local contractors. Perhaps the county can find a way to subsidize the certification and training costs of local contractors, if you value local contracting and local jobs. Finally, I will say it is irresponsible to vote on and pass this ordinance today in its current form.
Thank you, Ken. Moving to Speaker twenty-two, Michael, is it Cruzen?
Cruzen.
Yeah, coming up.
Hello, my name's Michael Cruzen. I'm a taxpaying resident of State College Borough. I work with Central PA United. We're a nonprofit, nonpartisan political group. We try to lift up the voices for poor and working-class families of Center County, and that's what I'm here to do. I'm going to keep it simple, just to say, listen to the workers that have already come up here from all over the state to talk about the importance of having an RCO, how it affected their lives. I think their opinions are valid, even though they don't pay taxes here, and listen to Zachary as well. He was able to sacrifice his time to be here today to talk about how important passing this RCO is. So, even though it's just him, I'm here to lift up the voices of everyone else who wasn't able to be here today to say, "Pass this workers' ordinance to make sure that our taxpayers are going towards safe and responsible work." Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. All right, we'll move to Speaker number twenty-three, Allison Kurtz. I know Allison had to end up being in the overflow room. We'll give her a minute to come to the mic, and if she's not able to make it, we'll try to cycle her in a little bit later. Oh, she's coming in? Okay, great.
Sorry, there's a long delay out there.
No, that's all right, no problem.
Thank you, Marie, for encouraging, wherever you are, all of us to be in the same room. I'm Allison Kurtz. I am the president of Ameron Construction. We are a local excavation company, been in business since 1984. I've been at the company for thirty-two years, so I think that qualifies me as somewhat of an expert on this matter. Nobody is opposed to responsible contractors, you know? It's a really catchy title, and so how could anybody be opposed to RCO? I think we need to define what "responsible" means, and in looking at that more scientifically, we need to have metrics that use data, OSHA 300s, the DART, the EMR, the TRIR. That's easy. I don't understand why that's not in this language. Many other people have raised this issue before me. We don't know who these five deaths are, but it keeps being touted, so I'd really be curious to know who the three are that I'm not aware of. This is my time. While this ordinance doesn't speak to "you have to be a union contractor," that's kind of a de facto consequence of this ordinance, the way it's written. I have roughly sixty employees, and we are very much an aging workforce. We take safety very seriously. We do OSHA 30 in-house every year. We do CPR, we do first aid, we do rigging, everything. What this would do, if this is passed in its current form, will disenfranchise my sixty workers, because I cannot tell them, after forty years in the field, or twenty-five years in the field, "Oh, you don't qualify, you have to go be an apprentice now." I mean, that's just insulting, and to, somebody made a point before me, there's other avenues for training. There's CPI. We have a lot of good graduates that come out of that. There's Penn Tech. There's people that grew up on a farm, and they can fix anything, and they can run anything. If we're concerned about somebody having a really low bid that we think is not going to get the job done, either on time or safely or whatever, take that provision out. You know, you don't have to take the low bid, you can take the low- You know, you don't have to take the low bid, you can take the lowest responsible bidder, right? Every time we bid a job at Amron, we fill out a pre-qualification form that might be five to seven pages and it looks at our safety history, our financial capacity, our bonding limits, past projects of a similar nature and size. You put all those people down as references. There is a vetting process in play with almost every GC. PennDOT has it, I have to do this for PennDOT twice a year. I just don't understand the problem we're trying to solve. There is a labor shortage and so by enacting this ordinance as it is, it will exacerbate the labor shortage here. My guys will not be able to bid on projects. And where are they going to go? They're not going to go do a four-year apprentice program. Let me just see if I had anything else. So before I leave, I really would like to know who those five deaths are because that's tragic. I mean, the first thing when I interview a new person, I say, the most important thing to me is you go home every day, all your pieces and parts. You know what? Safety does not, everything takes a backseat to safety, production, all that stuff. You go home, you do your job safely and go home. As far as the quality of construction, Center Region Code, or the Water Authority, or the Sewer Authority, they inspect all these projects. So I don't, I cannot understand how a union contractor is going to have a higher quality product than a merit shot contractor. It just, you know, there's no data, there's been a lot of assertions that unions provide a better product and a safer product. Thank you. And I have yet to see any data to back that up and I would really appreciate that. So my request is that we table this vote for today until we work out some of the issues like that Class A apprentice that doesn't really exist and how are we going to define the off-site fabrication? You know, I can't go to my precaster and say, well you're making manholes for this project so therefore you've got to pay prevailing wage to your factory workers. They're not a party to the contract, right? I can't impose that condition on them. So, thank you for your time.
Great, thanks Allison. Our next speaker is number 24, Colleen Kennedy.
I'm Colleen Kennedy, Center County Treasurer. As a resident of Patton Township and a Center County taxpayer, I'm also a member of We the People. People have asked about the five deaths, what was it, a couple of months ago, the Seven Mountains Labor Council held a memorial for those five workers. It was in the news, you can check the CDT and StateCollege.com. Most of us Democratic officials were there, Steve Dershowen was not, and neither were a lot of the contractors in our county, they were not at that worker memorial. So you can look up that information, it's available. In 2018, Associated Builders Contractors Eastern PA sued several municipalities that enacted RCOs using the same or similar arguments that we're hearing here in Center County. That suit was dismissed with prejudice by the court in 2019, saying in part, regardless of whether a contractor currently participates in a qualifying apprentice program, its non-union status doesn't prevent it from participating in such a program. It continues, "The fact that they chose not to do so does not mean that the purported purpose of the RCO is a pretext to benefit unions." And in 2020, the decision was upheld on appeal. I believe that the contractors, ABC, and probably the opponents of this RCO are aware of that and many other legal challenges that opponents have not won. I believe that this ordinance will pass, so I'm not here today to convince those who will not be convinced. As people who know me understand, I speak out because I can't let disinformation stand unchallenged. One of our Commissioners has insinuated that his colleagues have accepted bribes to pass this ordinance, which is a disgraceful accusation to make. He's co-opted the language of fairness and equality which is disingenuous. This ordinance protects smaller businesses by putting them on a more equal footing with the huge contractors that run roughshod over regulations and workers' rights. The $250,000 threshold means that this ordinance is specifically targeted to large projects, something that people seem to keep overlooking, is that anything under $250,000, this ordinance doesn't touch. It doesn't touch it, plenty of projects. That Commissioner has also said there's no need for the ordinance because everything's been fine in Center County for 200 years. Two large local contractors have committed wage theft against their employees and the tens of millions of dollars. That is not fine. Workers have died on local work sites, that is not fine. One of those workers was from another state, so local contractors are already using labor from outside the county. It should not be controversial to give our county Commissioners some level of discretion in awarding large dollar bids to companies that abide by the law and treat their workers fairly. Thank you for your time, that concludes my comments.
Thank you Colleen. We will move to Speaker number 25, Daniel, is it McIntyre?
Yes, Daniel McIntyre. I'm a taxpayer in Harris Township. First of all, I'd like to thank those who came from out of the county, please patronize our restaurants and other things in the county. I have a number of general comments and some specific comments. First of all, as somebody has just mentioned, this seems like a solution looking for a problem. Are the buildings in Center County falling down around our ears? You know, are the contracts that you've promulgated over time, are those failing? Has the potential effect on minority and women-owned businesses been assessed? Are there sufficient Center County contractors and labor to be responsive to these qualifications? Or will contracts be awarded to bidders out of the county or out of the state? It was nice to see some people speaking today who signed the front of a check, the front of a paycheck and not just the back. With the $500 to $700 million proposed PSU athletic facility construction work and the $600 million State College area connector project to begin in the next few years, will there be sufficient contractors and labor willing to work under these requirements? And there are no provisions to appeal adverse determinations by the county of the many conditions imposed for prospective contractors. So the devil's always in the details. So what are the details here? In Section 1, the Purpose, the third paragraph, the firms will provide adequate wages and benefits. Adequate is not defined and it's subjective. Does Center County use the same standard of adequate for set wages and benefits for all county employees and all service providers? I understand there's people in politics who don't know what the meaning of is is, who don't know what the meaning of a woman is and you can become a Supreme Court Justice, but you guys should know what the word responsible means. Section 3, Contractor Responsibility Certification, the firm has not been debarred or suspended by any federal, state, or local government agency or authority in the past three years. Will this apply if the suspension has been lifted, is in litigation, or has expired? What are the details? Paragraph 3, small c, Section 5, the firm has not had any type of business contracting or trade license, registration, or certification revoked or suspended in the past three years. Again, what if the condition has been corrected? Are we going to eliminate that contract? Paragraph 3, small c, Section 7, within the past three years has the contractor been fined or paid, made a payment of $5,000 or more? This condition is way too broad and does not account for negotiated settlements where the contractor determined it was less expensive to settle than continued litigation without admission of guilt. This can all, there can also be fines which are completely immaterial to the work to be performed. For example, a contractor's truck driver could be cited for an overweight load because he got on the wrong road and was overweight. Nothing to do with what may be going on and those fines can be considerable. Under Section 5, Subcontractor Responsibility Requirements, a subcontractor listed on a firm subcontractor list shall not be substituted unless written authorization is obtained from Center County. This written authorization for the substitute contractor should not be unreasonably withheld and should be provided timely. You should not be able to hold up a contract on his work by pointing to one of the subcontractors. The Contractor Responsibility Review and Determination, Section 6, Paragraph E, a responsibility determination may be revoked at any time if Center County obtains the relevant information warranting any such revocation. There's no opportunity to appeal or correct a deficiency and assured recovery at any expense that that contractor may have imposed up to that date when you have cut him off at the knees. In summary, if Center County is or has routinely experiencing failure of contractor performance, what remedial measures have been taken with the engineering, project management, or procurement functions to identify causes and promote remedies? And when were these measures implemented? Will you identify those failures and the cost incurred by the county as a result? What positions have been had accountable for the contractor's performances, if any? In summary, this ordinance is shown to be unnecessarily unnecessary and poorly drafted with several conditions where a contractor is put in an unfair commercial condition with no appeal, appeal, or evaluation of facts. This draft ordinance fails its intended purpose of clarifying the responsible standard and substitutes ambiguity and subjectivity for customary commercial performance terms in the contracting industry. Thank you.
Great, thank you Daniel. Our 26th speaker will be Michael Black. Coming up, Michael.
Good morning, County Commissioners and Administrator, thank you for hosting this meeting and solicitor. My name is Michael Black, I'm a Borough of State College resident and my interests in this ordinance are many, however, I'll keep my comments brief and mainly regarding the interest in passing law on due process. And in full disclosure, I am not a laborer, I am not a contractor, and I'm not associated or affiliated with any of the sort. I'm here with specific interest in due process in local and state government. So I understand the objectives and I've been reading this carefully and as you repeated this morning, the two main objectives are cost and to limit risk and I think those are admirable and important objectives to state and achieve. So I'm curious about click moments. With that said, are the Commissioners able to share with us and will you please share with us the thresholds for both stated objectives, cost and safety? Will you please identify the specific times and the extent to which these thresholds have been crossed? In essence, what was, what's the motivation? What was the moment that said we've got to act and this is how we want to act? So I believe personally that data-driven decisions are our best made decisions. So I ask the Commissioners to please share with us the data that supports how the decisions in this ordinance will be evaluated and most importantly, directly help achieve those important objectives stated and finally, are the best options for achieving critically, critical safety, fiscal, and quality standards? Have you considered the unintended, both positive and negative consequences that may occur as a result of this ordinance? I'm neither stating preference on passing or holding off the ordinance. I'd like to share a deeper concern about a deeper dive into the ordinance consequences, both intended and unintended. It was fantastic to be here this morning because I've heard from both sides and both sides have compelling arguments for you to sit back and discuss. And as a community member, a concerned community member for both safety and cost, I really urge you to sit back and wrestle with this. Put your best thinking caps, your best energy on and give it some really good, careful considerations for us, the people. Thank you so much.
Thank you Michael. Our next speaker I believe is also named Michael, Michael Ford.
Good morning, I am Michael Ford, I'm the Secretary Treasurer of the State Building Trades. So I heard a lot of misinformation today, I heard a lot of good arguments on both sides of it, but it's a common sense issue. This is about doing the right thing for workers. I don't care if you sign the front of the paycheck or the back. That's a pretty awful way to put it. Is that who, the only people to get to have safety is if you sign the front of the paycheck? I'd take objection with that. Again, this is a common sense bill, it's passed over cities, communities, townships, everywhere, all over this Commonwealth. I urge your passage on the vote.
Great, thank you Michael. Speaker number 28, Buddy Franklin.
Good morning. Thank you Commissioners for holding this public hearing and allowing all of us to speak and voice our opinions. My name's Buddy Franklin, I'm with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local Number 5. I'm a taxpayer in Snowshoe Township. I've been at all three of the public hearings. I see some familiar faces, I also see some new faces and some that are missing. I think that what we haven't done, we've heard a lot about apprenticeship and how it's going to exclude because it's 70%. I still think you're missing that spot where 30% of the people on that job, the workers on that job, can be trained anywhere, whether it was trained by their father or trained at Thaddeus Stevens or Penn Tech. But there is a 70% threshold of workers that would be in apprenticeship or graduated from one. So I think that's a kind of a moot point, but the safety issue, we're throwing ratings around and talking about EMR and TIF and whatever. Ultimately, that favors large companies because they can have one or two, three accidents, deaths. If they have 100 people working for them, their rating goes down because it's based on a percentage. It's a percentage of hours worked to hours that were, an injury caused with workers' compensation. So that in itself eliminates that small business competition that it seems like we're so focused on making sure we have. But ultimately, I think that those things are all side notes. Side notes to subsection 3, Article C 6 and 7, which says you can't break the law. You can't break the law and then bid on projects after you've broken the law. Right now, because the question has been brought by Commissioner Dershowen as to why now? Well, why now is, we have two contractors in Center County that were under grand jury investigation for stealing from their workers. They both were found guilty, charged with felonies. Some pled guilty, which was one fellow that isn't here that was at the first meeting, Scott Good, pled guilty to four felonies. He was charged in 2019 with 200 counts plus of stealing from his workers. He was sentenced to four months to two years in jail and to pay $64,000 plus in restitution to those workers. The other's Mike Hawbaker, he's been at a lot of these, spoke. Hawbaker pled no contest to four felony counts of theft. And I believe a Speaker just before me said, well, if someone says, hey, it was just an accident, we should still be able to bid. Ultimately, while all these investigations were going on, I want you to understand, they're continuing to bid. Hawbaker's in Supreme Court right now, fighting for the opportunity to continue to bid projects in Pennsylvania. Even though they agreed to pay $20,696,453 to 1,267 workers. Is that an accident? Is that We the People? I think not. So what I would also say then too, just in closing, understand the laws that are set in place right now through the Prevailing Wage Act and things like that, don't stop these contractors from continuing to bid on work, file appeals, go through this arduent process of trying to be excluded from bidding even though they break laws. The other thing I want to point out, we have a lot of representatives of ABC in this room. The ABC Central Pennsylvania Chair was Scott Good until he was convicted, or until he was charged with these counts, over 200. The Chair after him, Tim Kessling, a worker for Glen O. Hawbaker. So now, today, it's a time for the Commissioners to decide. Are you going to stand with the workers of Central Pennsylvania? With the taxpayers? Or are you going to stand with the contractors, the owners, and the organizations that have already proven that they can't be trusted? Thank you.
Great, thank you Buddy. I think we had one, one or two people who registered late for speaking. All right, I think, I think we only have two more. Joanne and Alan's, I think Joanne is first, number 29, Joanne Tosty Vasey.
Bring it down to my height. I'm Joanne Tosty Vasey, I live here in Bellefonte. I'm also a member of Bellefonte Borough Council. I'm also a member of Bellefonte Borough Council, but I am talking from a personal viewpoint today rather than in my official capacity. I am in support of this ordinance, and I fully agree with this, most of what everyone said this morning, particularly Jesse Barlow, Hillary Caldwell, and Colleen Kennedy. You didn't, you asked us not to go repeat what other people had said. So there are two things I want to talk about. The first is that I believe that this ordinance is actually a sustainability ordinance for the county. When you provide good, quality, safe buildings, it not only makes for the safety of the individuals who are working on the construction, but in the long term, 50 years down the road, 100 years down the road, that building and its construction will have less maintenance and better ability for you as a community to know that you can go in that building and not have it fall down around you. And it will cost the taxpayers much less in the long run. Sustainability is economic viability. I believe that's what we need. Secondly, and this is just a personal story, and it's a different level of the $250,000. This is a small project I had in my house about 20 years ago. When we bought our house, there was no heat on the north side of the building. So in the winter, we got rather cold. Eventually, we hired a company to come in and put radiators and steam pipes into our steam heating system. The supervisor had gone through an apprenticeship and was registered. His workers were not. They came in and they put in pipes that had 90-degree angles. I, not being a union member, not being a pipe fitter, had read some books before this happened and realized that there was something wrong because if we kept that there, we would have ended up with loud banging because every time steam hits a right angle, it bangs. He, knowing his apprentice, from his experience, went back, had those guys pull out those pipes and redo them so that we had a quiet home and we wouldn't be awakened in our sleep at night. That's what an apprenticeship does. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Joanne. And then I believe our last speaker, speaker number 30, Allen's, is it Kerrig?
Allen Kerrig, last but not least. All right. I am Allen Kerrig, and I'm a retired socioeconomicist and public policy consultant. And I had a pretty neat career of 40-plus years at the federal, state, and local level as a consultant on public policy issues. And I did a lot of work in education, in workforce development, labor force issues, and that kind of thing. So I'm sort of appearing here today. I'm not representing any group. You might say that I'm here representing the dismal art and science of economics, which though, when it gets to be applied, socioeconomic on public policy issues, it gets a little more exciting. So anyway, when this hearing started here, I got the idea that I might be the only Center County native that was going to show up here today to talk on this issue. But it's been pretty balanced along the way, which is a good thing. I am sort of a Center County native. My great-grandfather came up here from Williamsport in 1894, and he homesteaded and he built the red brick house just to the east of the Meyer Dairy Farm on the Branch Road. And he was a stonemason by trade. And he and my father, they built the Stone Arch Bridge that's in front of that house. And when they finished it, my great-grandfather had done work up here at People's Farmers College, or whatever they called it then. And all the engineering professors came out because they thought this Stone Arch Bridge was going to fall down. When the forms were pulled out, they thought that couldn't be done that way. So anyway, that Stone Arch Bridge is still there today. So it was built in about 1910. About 40 years ago, my younger son, who was a deep-sea diver, he got tired living out of a suitcase, and he decided to come back here and he started a handyman business. But with the work skills that he'd acquired as a deep-sea diver, he soon developed that business into the number-one service plumbing business in the State College area at the time. So there were two individuals in my family who are tradespeople who never were certified in anything, and I'm pretty happy that they didn't have to meet any barriers of getting serviced by to accomplish what they did. So to get back to the economics of the thing, I think that there's some smoke and mirrors going on here with this proposed ordinance in that it's put forward as something that will ostensibly increase worker safety and will also increase the number of trained people that are available to do these jobs. I don't think that's necessarily going to happen from an economic standpoint. This ordinance is anti-competitive, it's protectionist, and it's only going to restrict entry into these trade fields, and it's certainly going to increase the cost of the projects, and it's going to increase the cost to the taxpayers. It's not going to be in the best interest of the taxpayers. So I see I've only got one minute left, so I'll just say that the answer to these problems is to try to increase the supply of trained people in the trades. Our educational system is way out of whack today. We're not producing the individuals that are needed to fill these spots. So if something is to be done, it's got to be to try to increase vocational training and increase the number of people who are coming out that can do these jobs. Well, I'll quit. I'm out of town. I'm not done, but I'm out of town, so.
Great, thanks, Allen. Okay, so we have heard from testimony from 30 different individuals on the Center County Responsible Contractor Ordinance. We will, yes?
Can you move your microphone a little bit closer?
A little closer to the mouth?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Is that better, Stephanie? Okay, great. So sorry to backtrack a little bit. We've heard public comment from 30 different individuals on the Center County Responsible Contractor Ordinance. We will now close the public hearing here at 11:58. We will now move on to item number seven, which is ordinance number one of 2023, Responsible Contractor Ordinance, an ordinance providing for the adoption of certain procedures relating to the solicitation award of Center County government public construction contracts valued at $250,000 or more. We will follow the Robert Rules of Order, so we will initially have a motion and a second on the ordinance, and then we'll have discussion by the board, and then we will hold the vote. So can we have a motion to consider ordinance number one of 2023?
Motion to table it first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance one of 2023.
All right, I will second the motion. So now the ordinance number one of 2023 is on the floor for discussion. Traditionally, we have the vice chair speak first, the commissioner speak second, and usually the chair finishes it off. So Commissioner Concepcion, any comments on the discussion and ordinance so far?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Higgins, and thank you to everyone who spent their time with us this morning. I really appreciate the time that you've all spent. It's been, we've had two hours of robust discussion. I think it's been very informative for all of us, and I will take Marie's comments about the venue to heart. It's, you know, it's certainly, it's certainly not the ideal venue, so I really thank you all for your patience. So moving on, I'd like to be really clear on why I support this Responsible Contractor Ordinance. Evidence-based policy is our best bet for improving outcomes for our constituents, and I've always tried to approach major decisions through an understanding of the available data. Responsible contractor ordinances protect taxpayers' investments in public facilities by establishing minimum training criteria for workers on projects that must go to the lowest bidder. None of us would hire a contractor to do work in our own home without knowing whether they had the training to do the job correctly. As officials in a position of fiduciary trust for the county, we have a responsibility to do what we can to ensure that taxpayers are getting what they are paying for and that our workplaces are safe. Responsible contractor ordinances are not new, and their effects have been well studied. Numerous local government units across Pennsylvania have such ordinances or policies in place, including requirements for apprenticeship training and requirements that custom fabrication be done in accordance with prevailing wage. There is nothing unique here. The Pennsylvania courts and federal district courts have upheld RCOs as serving a legitimate state interest. The arguments being used against this RCO are also not unique and have been used by opponents of RCOs in many other communities as well. But rather than guess about the possible effects of an RCO, we are best served by looking to the available data. A 2014 large N study in the peer-reviewed journal Industrial Relations showed that similar responsible contractor policies in Ohio over a study period of 1997 to 2008, two decades, did not increase the cost of construction bids. A 2010 study in the same peer-reviewed journal examining public construction in Massachusetts came to the same result. There are also studies to indicate positive effects on communities from RCOs, including a 2018 study of counties in Indiana over the past decade, which found that such ordinances improve productivity and infrastructure safety for local communities, reduce turnover costs for contractors, and improve wages for construction workers. These policies protect taxpayers by ensuring that contractors meet local qualifications and safety standards based on objective criteria and verifiable standards. An RCO works within the low-bid system to provide the highest possible quality work at the lowest possible cost. Studies from across the country show that RCOs help promote higher-quality service, increase competition among responsible contractors, reduce turnover rates among workers on projects, reduce costs related to mistakes, and reduce delays in project completion. The apprenticeship standards specifically ensure that local governments are employing educated and skilled workers while investing in the next generation of our workforce. I'd also like to specifically address the concern that the training requirements in the RCO will unfairly affect local contractors bidding on county projects. First, the county legally cannot choose to select a local contractor over a lower bid from a non-local contractor on projects of a size that must be bid. Second, on even relatively locally-owned construction firms, they are often bringing in workers from well outside the area to meet the construction demand we have in our local region. There are simply far more projects ongoing in our area than there are workers who live nearby. However, there are, in fact, hundreds of skilled trades or craft labor workers in our region who are currently in an apprenticeship program or who have graduated from such a program. Training and qualification, training qualifications and safety go hand in hand, and the county is right to establish benchmarks and safeguards that protect both taxpayers and workers. That's all.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Concepcion. Commissioner Dershowm?
Well, I find it sort of curious that we refer to these Responsible Contract Ordinances as if every one is like every other one. If you go to the city of Allentown, their ordinance indicates that 80% of the folks that work on City of Allentown projects have to be within Lehigh County. So what I guess I'm indicating is there's many ways to skin this cat, if you will. There are lots of ways we can look at what a Responsible Contract Ordinance does. And if it's to flush out folks that are unethical or improper, that's one conversation. If you're talking about safety, you're talking another conversation. The initial project that we started off here with the initial version of this indicated that there would be the experience modification rate as a metric of how things are supposed to occur. And if you understand how workman's compensation works, the more accidents you have, the more paid, you know, time off you generate because of accidents, that's going to indicate basically the quality of workplace that you have. So we can look at this in 15 different ways to Sunday, and I think it's been brought up here enough times at this point that there's a lot of nebulous pieces of this puzzle that continue to generate more and more questions. And we can sit and talk about what they are. I think the die is cast about how this vote's going to go, but it really doesn't answer the biggest issue that I have, which is fairness. And I know there's lots of folks out there that maybe don't appreciate my look at things, but I'm going to tell you, I have a degree from Penn State University in Labor Studies. I studied with the communication workers. I did a lot of things that, I understand trade unions, I understand the labor movement pretty darn well. But I want you to understand, I would be vehemently opposed to this, even if the tide returned and it favored non-union folks against the trade unions. I want the fairest, straightest line we can between getting a project done and its completion, or started from its completion at an economical rate. I want everybody to be able to bid, to think about, you know, how can we be part of something going on in Center County that would be positive for our community? I think the 70% threshold for apprenticeships is, I don't think it's, first of all, I don't think it's enforceable, and I think it's going to create a lot of issues. But that being said, that's one of the many unintended consequences that were reflected earlier. I just don't know how we can continue to look at this as being fair based on a lot of the conversation we've had here today. It's going to shut out a lot of local contractors. It just is. There's just no way that you're going to say, okay, we're going to do X amount of things here in Center County government using Center County labor. It's just not going to happen. We just, we don't have that kind of workforce here. So we're going to be, we're going to be tentacled out all across the state for labor, and we're going to, we're going to be benefiting the folks in Philadelphia and Pittsburgh and Redding and Allentown and all those other areas because they're going to come here to work because our people are shut out. I have a problem with that. I have a problem with the same people that are paying the tax to making sure that these projects occur, to being the ones that say, hey, you're not qualified to work. I know people that have been into skilled trades for decades, decades and decades, that would be incredible workers, that have accomplished amazing things in their lives, that have done projects that are much, much grander than anything Center County's probably ever going to do, that will never be able to participate in this. This is a flawed ordinance. We need, I agree with the folks that say, we need to go back and look at the things that we actually can do and will do better to make sure that the workers are safe, that everybody is taken care of, and that we have responsible contractors. But this is so broad and so nebulous that I think that there's very little doubt in my mind that this is going to show a lot of flaws in the future. And history is going to indicate one way or another. But Mark Amber, I would really, if you look into those cameras and tell the taxpayers, tell the contractors and their workers how this is fair to them when they cannot participate in those projects because they don't have that apprenticeship background. That's just one of the many things that I struggle with here. I really think this was rushed through. I think every time somebody had a thought, they changed it, they twisted it, and made it to what it is today, which is actually a far cry from what the original conversation was along the way. And I just think this is a mistake, and we- And I, I just think this is a mistake, and we really need to rethink this and, and let history look at it, that we took a little bit more time and a little bit more effort to, to, to get participation from everybody in our community to make sure that we did what we think is, is, is best for everyone. I can go into a lot more, I think a lot of it was said today. Again, the flaws are very apparent to me, and I know, I know not everybody thinks that, and some people think this is, doesn't go far enough, that we should, we should be even more restrictive. But that's why I'm going to call this, stop calling this the responsible contractor ordinance, and call it the restrictive contractor ordinance, because that's what this truly is today. So, there ends my comments, I have nothing else to add.
Great, thank you Steve. I will begin by stating that the majority of contractors in Center County and Pennsylvania are honest and strive to run their businesses well. This RCO will protect taxpayer dollars and strengthen our communities. Current state legislation forces local governments to always take the low bid for large construction projects, as the legislature has not defined what responsible bidder means. An RCO will allow the commissioners to weed out unscrupulous bidders who low-ball bids and then create multiple change orders to improve their profit to the unfair advantage of the honest contractors. Due to the requirement for Pennsylvania Labor and Industry certified training, it levels the playing field for in-state smaller bidders, because it makes it more difficult for large contractors to bring in out-of-state contractors and workers, therefore supporting local workers' wages and benefits. The experience in North Hampton County has been that it has reduced their costs, and they've received fewer change orders on large construction projects after implementing their RCO. An RCO encourages workforce development by using the over 1,500 certified training programs from the Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry. The Local Associated Builders and Contractors Chapter has multiple PA Department of Labor and Industry certified training programs that recently graduated 96 individuals. This is in addition to the thousands of people who have graduated from these programs, either from their employer or from local union contractors throughout the central portion of the state. Requiring OSHA safety training and certified skilled training will improve on-the-job safety. In Center County, we have an issue with construction worker deaths. I will name them now. Over the past five years, five construction workers have died on the job in Center County. There are Corey Iker, 43, of Belfont, Pennsylvania; Adam Nauf, 40, of Kirwinville, Pennsylvania; Anthony Lethertz of Hawk Run, Pennsylvania; Alexander Fries, 19, of Weedville, Pennsylvania; and the most recent one, Joshua Farkas, 42, of Westminster, Maryland. That's a fact. Five people have perished in Center County in the last five years on the job. Center County government skilled labor construction projects over $250,000 are a tiny fraction of skilled labor projects in Center County. There are a total of nearly $1 billion of construction projects announced just by Penn State and Mount Ennietney Hospital over the last couple months, not covered by a Center County government responsible contractor ordinance for county government projects over $250,000. There are also substantial additional commercial and residential projects that are not covered by Center County responsible contractor ordinance. As was mentioned earlier, there are a number of counties, municipalities, and school districts in Pennsylvania that have RCOs. I've obviously been up here, I haven't had a chance to check it, but supposedly covering nearly half of the population of, of the Commonwealth. There's also a number nationally, as Commissioner Concepcion mentioned in some of the academic studies. A nearly identical county government RCO from North Hampton County passed constitutional muster back in 2019, and Harrisburg City and Redding both have custom prefabrication sections in their RCO. I know the one in Harrisburg City passed back in 2021. The county has held two public work sessions on January 10th and May 23rd to take public comment on the RCO. We did make several changes to the responsible contractor ordinance based on the public comment. We've also advertised the ordinance in the Saturday Times, and we've heard a substantial amount of public comment today. We appreciate citizens taking the time to attend these public sessions. Thank you. All right, I think that concludes the discussion by the board. At this point, I think we could take a motion to adopt ordinance number one of 2023. So, we doubt, right, thanks for the reminder Amber. We have, we have had a motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting ordinance one of 2023 do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay.
Nay.
All right, motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone, for attending. For those of you who are interested in the Community Development Block Grant Program, that will be the next portion of the commissioner's agenda. Otherwise, it's a relatively light agenda. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Appreciate it, appreciate the comments. Thank you.
Is it possible to have a short recess?
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, good, good idea Amber. Let's, let's take, what, five minutes, 10 minutes? Yeah, all right. Take a roughly six-minute recess here. Good, so we will come out of recess here at 12:24, and we will move to contracts and authorizations, planning and community development, our Community Development Block Grant, CDBG 2023 Project Review. And are you going to kick it off, Ray, or do we go straight to Mitzi?
I'll kick it off.
Okay. All right.
Good afternoon Commissioners. Today, we have an item for the 2023 CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant Project Review. Back on May 11th, we conducted a public hearing here at 6:00 PM where myself, our administrator John Frohneck, and our CDOC representative, Mitzi Gallagher Long, attended, along with three individual project or potential applicants for this year's CDBG program. So this afternoon, we have a list of potential projects that have been submitted through Mitzi, and I'm going to let Mitzi go through those in some detail, just to let you know where we are with the summary list of those within Center County, so.
Good morning, or afternoon now.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, the projects submitted so far, and this is just review, this is just kind of going over, these are the projects so far, you don't need to take any action today. Haynes Woodward Water Authority submitted the Mountain Avenue Waterline Replacement Project. This is the same project that they submitted last year that was not selected. This is to replace approximately 700 linear feet of deteriorated leaking water main along Mountain Avenue. This portion of the project was not funded with the current project that they have, and that was mainly of their request and their engineers to not include that because of funding concerns. The project is fundable. The survey they conducted last year is still valid, which showed an 81.48% LMI, low moderate income residency. The amount needed for their project is $215,700. The county's total allocation for project constructions is $285,171. The second project is a new HAMA project, Haynes-Aaronsburg Municipal Authority. This project would be replacement of their water distribution lines throughout the HAMA system. And this, they actually told me this morning, they need additional funding from what you see on your paper. Their total new estimated is $368,700. So that, if selected, will obviously be a multi-year project, because the county, that's more than the county's full allocation. Third project is a Phase Two to the Gregg Township Community Center Project. Last year's project replaced the gym floor and old outdated windows. This project they're submitting will replace heat pumps, storage room windows, a stage floor, stage access, and electrical upgrade to the gym. That has an approximate estimate of $189,900. And then the last project is a possible housing rehabilitation pilot program. This is on your list, because every year, DCD makes comment to your three-year plan and to your application that Center County does not have a housing rehab program, and that they are recommending the county think about a program for housing rehabilitation. Every time you get monitored, which has been twice now in the last five years, DCD notes this as well, notes it's a deficiency. So I did add it to your list, just so you have it on there and we can tell DCD that you discussed it. Union County Housing Authority runs the Union County Housing Rehab Program and the Snyder County Rehab Program. They have shown a willingness that they would be willing to run a Center County program as well. And what they would do is, they would need at least the year time while we wait for your contract, if you submit this project, to establish a program with Center County contractors who would do housing rehab. And what this is, is a full income intake is done on your residents. It is single occupied homeowner-owned properties only, so it's not commercial, it's not rental. And the homeowner has to be low moderate income, which they use 80% or 50% AMI of the homes. the home Section 8 income limits. And then it is to bring a house up to code. And how much they spend on a house really all depends on what is needed in a house. What I see a lot of in Union County in the projects is a lot of older homeowners that can't take care of their property anymore, so they may have outdated windows, failing windows. They may need a bathtub or a shower that they can actually access. So a funding per house could be anywhere from $20,000 to $40,000, depending on what would need done. And that is all the projects that have been submitted so far for CDBG 2023. And I will be back again in July for you to actually select projects.
So there won't be any more projects added to the list at this point? There's like a couple?
Potentially, there could be, but the community letter already went out with a date of two weeks ago for projects to be submitted to me, and if something does come in now, we just need, possibly, need to go do a survey. And Mountaintop was at your hearing, and they decided they did not want to undergo the survey process, which is required to know whether your project is fundable and eligible.
Commissioner Concepcion, questions? I know this is something somewhat new.
Yeah, no, thanks for reviewing these with us. So the next step is that we would need to vote to endorse these projects?
Yes, and I will, if more come in, I will update this list. I will change the HAMA request to what they actually need. That will come back to you. I think John suggested a possible meeting with John, Ray, and I to go over the projects to present to you before selection.
Okay.
Commissioner George.
Okay. Thank you.
Quick question I have, Mitzi, is it sounds like we could partially fund projects to maybe potentially do part of two, but then I think we probably have to, what, follow up with more money the following year?
Yes, you can select projects, more than one project, and a project can be multi-year.
Great, thanks. Any more questions? Yes, Joy.
Can I vote in here?
Sure.
So this is just, I think, maybe for the public more than anything. Belfont is a subcontractor to the county under the CDBG program. There is one project that is a multi-year that you're referring to that is repair the suspension bridge in Tallyrand Park that is on the list for you all to vote on next month. It will be made, okay, oh, they don't, okay. That's, that was going to be my question, how does this fit in?
Yeah.
But just FYI, that project will have BADA accessible, so the steps that go up to the suspension, but will be turned into zigzag ramps on both sides. Just FYI.
So that's something Belfont Borough Council would vote on, but not Center County? Okay.
I think we just administered the Belfont.
Yes, Belfont is an on behalf of community, which means they get their own entitlement allocation to be used only for Belfont residents. They go through a first hearing process separate from the counties, but back in 2015, DCD removed all the OBOs to do a final hearing and administer projects on their own, so they fall under the county contract, the county umbrella for final hearing, and you're basically a pass through for the Belfont project. So council gets to select their own project, which they did on the 20th, on the 20th, and that is the Tallyrand Suspension Bridge. It's a RAB project, removal of architectural barrier. Right now, there's two sets of steps on each side, so it's not accessible. So the project will remove both sets of steps, have a graded ramp. It will also build a connector path from the pathway that is there to a picnic area so that that picnic area is accessible. Right now, there's no connector, there's grass there, so you can't get there with a motorized scooter or wheelchair. So, and then the picnic table that's currently there has built-in benches, so you can't get a wheelchair up to it. So we'll remove that and create a new accessible seating area. It's a great project.
Great, thanks. All right.
Sue Smith has a question.
Oh, yeah, Sue, come on up.
Sue Smith, Center County resident for 52 years. Maybe I have seniority, I don't know. I'd just like to say I've been working on housing issues for many years in Center County, and it's fallen on the hands, on the heads of Habitat for Humanity, other groups that have been doing rehab of houses, just as simple as ramps. And these things should be available through the government, I think, because it's too much to ask for volunteers, and if there's money for other kinds of rehab of houses that will make them habitable, keep people in their own homes rather than using nursing homes or other kinds of facilities, it's a good use of money. So I'd like to support however that works. I didn't even know that it was a possibility. Thank you.
Oh, great. No, thanks, Sue. We are using some of our whole home money from the state of PA. It was over $500,000 in cooperation with Habitat for Humanity, potentially for those types of projects, but I can't promise exactly what they'll prioritize. All right. Any additional questions on the Community Development Block Grant information, or questions from the press on that? No? All right. I don't see that having any action item connected to it. We'll move to item number nine, our consent agenda. I believe it's some pretty standard contracts.
I will move to approve this week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor of approving this week's consent agenda do so by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries. All right, we'll move over to a larger-than-average check run. Commissioner Concepcion.
Sure. So the check that I'd like to highlight today from our check run is to SNCLEAR. SNCLEAR is a partnership between Center and Clearfield Counties, providing early intervention services. And with that, I will make a motion to approve the check run dated June 23rd, 2023.
I will second that. We have a motion to second to approve the check run dated June 23rd. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We thank you, Commissioner Concepcion. John, anything to report from the administration?
Nothing to report at this time.
Steve, do we have a voter's registration?
No report today.
Okay. We do have an announcement that Center County government offices will be closed on Tuesday, July 4th, in observance of Independence Day. Don't see any other major announcements there. I think John might have an executive session to report.
Yes, the Board of Commissioners met an executive session on June 22nd from 10:00 AM to 10:48 AM to discuss personnel matters, and there's no need to hold any additional ones at this time.
Great. Thanks, John. And the remainder of our public meeting schedule on Thursday, the 29th, we have our Finance Committee at 9:00, and the combined Board of Commissioners and Salary Board meetings at 10:00. And then Thursday of next week, July 6th, also Board of Commissioners and Combined Salary Board at 10:00. And then on Tuesday, July 11th, the regular Board of Commissioners meeting at 10:00 AM. Any questions from the press at this point?
Are there any projects in the pipeline for the county besides Center Crest that the RCO would apply to?
Depending on timing, we might have a couple of other projects coming up in the near future. I think eventually, Gary, some of the remodeling of the Willow Bank, possibly including the mythical Press Room, might also exceed the $250,000 limit.
In a press release from ABC with its associated building contractors, after the vote, it says, quote, "Commissioners Higgins and Concepcion have expressed their intention to public meetings that the RCO will apply to the upcoming county courthouse and nursing home projects." Is that correct?
Well, I think the nursing home would be the Center Crest remodel. Yeah, that project is substantially over $250,000. From the courthouse, it's, I believe, the oldest operating courthouse in the state, so it seems like we're always fixing something there, always working on something at the courthouse. So it's possible that in the future, we might have a courthouse-related project that would be over $250,000.
There's nothing in development at this time at the courthouse.
The retaining walls were, that contract is not.
That contract has already been let. We needed to get that underway because of the potential issues with collapse and other safety-related portions.
Final sentence here, I'm sorry, I don't like that. Given that this applies to any county project above $250,000, this will include many more public projects. Response?
I don't know where they're coming from on that. The county, this is for county projects, for county facilities involving building. We're specifically excluding municipalities and authorities.
Why not, why some raise the issue? Why not table and study for a couple more weeks? Why was it important to take the vote today?
Right. Well, we've been working on this since December of last year, and we're utilizing language from a variety of other counties and municipalities, and it doesn't take effect for another 30 more days after this. So we've been working on it for quite a while. It's proven itself in a variety of other municipalities and counties and school districts throughout the state and nationally, and at some point, hopefully in the not-too-distant future, the Center Crest remodeling project will go out to bed.
What does this vote do for the Center Crest town table, then?
At this point, we're still waiting on architect, we're still waiting on code, we're still waiting on a broad variety of other issues, so I don't, at this point, believe it would impact the timing.
Steve, I missed some meetings. Has there been any meeting where you accused your two other commissioners are taking a bribe to approve this? So you deny that statement? That's all I have.
Great, thanks. Any other questions from the rest of the press? All right. Well, unless there's anything else for the good of the order, I believe we could take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to second to adjourn the Commissioners' meeting at 12:40. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries.